So how many?
How are we doing?
Good, so far.
I may have to get up and talk to the other two.
Not for this break before summer.
Medication works.
Yes, the after sign effects.
Were they able to give you any other kind of antibiotics?
The other one's kind of swan through. Oh, you did?
Four months, probably not.
They gave me some antibiotics.
I took about ten days.
Did you finish them all?
Yes.
Just take it easy.
The first two days. Tear Larry away from the pizza. Last bite.
Am I in trouble?
I'm here in support of the art.
Is Wayne our cheering section today?
No, he's our harshest critic.
That's true. Well, call the meeting to order.
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Crowe Menwell.
Here.
And Councilmember Wales.
Excused. We're going to change the agenda a little bit tonight. Let's see, I think we're going to insert the King County wrapped Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan down under 4A. We're going to move that up under the, after the public art selection, which is 3B on the agenda. So I think the first thing we have is the Brandon Park and Reddington Levy Use Agreement.
Yeah, Staff Park Planner Jamie Kelly's here to give the report on that.
Jamie?
Oh, yeah. So the purpose of this presentation is to recommend to approve the resolution to execute a use agreement. It's basically a loose end for the Reddington Levy project that was back in 2013. The city entered into an interlocal agreement with King County and the King County Flood Control District for easements across the eastern portion of Brandon Park for the purposes of maintaining the levy flood control structure. Basically, the park property was purchased in 1971 through RCO funds at the time. RCO looks at easements across properties as, or they basically, if you have an easement across a property, then you have to go through this land use, this parkland conversion is what they call it. So the area that we're talking about here, so this is a pre-construction, pre-levy construction figure here. So the blue line is more or less the levy as it was before the setback. And then if you go to the post, the levy is more or less follows the paved trail that you see here. So there's not a whole lot of difference between the pre and the post. Through all kinds of discussions with RCO, decided that a use agreement was better suited for the situation than an easement across there. Still grants King County access for the purposes of maintaining their flood control structure. But it also gets us out of the land conversion requirement with RCO. So basically, this, let's see, so the easement diagram is in the resolution that you guys have in front of you. This 2.99 acres represents basically between the blue line and the levy trail. So the, prior to construction of the levy, there was still access to the river. Post-construction, we still have access to the river for recreational purposes. We also gained 1.7 miles of paved trail between Brandon Park and I Street, which, oops. So the red line represents the entire trail length that we gained through the project. And we still have access to the river. So it's just getting King County out of having to purchase 2.99 acres of property for parkland. And we still continue to basically have the same level of access to the river. And we gain the 1.7 miles of trail. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Councilmember Holman. When do you expect to bring this before council?
The next council meeting.
Councilmember Pelosi.
For those that don't know what RCO is, it's the Washington Recreation and Conservation Office.
Sorry about that.
That's right.
I noticed that we had a little high water in the river this last time, the big rain. And it flooded part of the Isaac Evans Park.
Yeah. Yeah, that happens from time to time. It usually takes the river to get up around 10,000 CFS for that to happen. I don't know what it peaked down at this last time.
It was phase two, is what I heard.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how much CFM that was.
So, I mean, really, I mean, with the, you know, with the levy being set back there, the river is basically has this whole area to take, you know, towards, you know, all the way up to the levy. The river can beander all the way out through there. But we'll still have that river access and the paved trail. So, I mean, from Park's point of view, we didn't really lose anything. We gained, you know, the 1.7 miles of trail, but we still have access to the river. So I think it seems like everybody wins.
Are there going to be another park in our future, Darrell?
No, but it does help us get the continuation of the Green River Trail, hopefully real soon, all the way up to 272nd.
Any other questions? Yolanda?
Will the trail ever be flooded?
No, the trail is on the top of the levy.
So it's the?
So it sits up, I forget what the elevation is of that levy, but, I mean, it's all engineered to the point where, you know, if it comes, even if it comes up to the levy, then it won't ever crest over. I think it would take like a, I don't know, a 12,000 CFS event or 14, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's a significant flow to get up over that levy.
So it's that high all through the trail?
Yeah, yep.
Councilmember Pelosi.
The governor, when we opened, when it was finished, he was here, the governor, Governor Inslee. And so we welcomed him on that top trail. It's a beautiful, beautiful job that they did.
Yeah, it's a great trail. And like Darrell said too, it opens the opportunity up to extend the Green River Trail north to 277th and beyond. There's some challenges in Kent with some private properties that, you know, in order to make that connection with Kent, but it still gets us the opportunity to get, you know, north to 277th to the north city limits, so.
And it also acts as a feeding area for the juvenile salmon.
Yeah, there's some off-river habitat in there.
Any other questions for Jamie? Thank you, Jamie. Okay, now we're looking at the public art selection. You're counting zero.
And my two cohorts. All right. I'm pleased to be here tonight on the public art selection process. And I'm joined with Nancy Colson from the Arts Commission, who is part of the subcommittee, as well as Peter Aquim. And he's the proposed artist for this site. You're going to get a chance to see some of his previous work, as well as the vision for what he has for this site. A little bit of background, we're kind of going to swing between all of us here. But the subcommittee is the method that the city has used for many years for selecting public art. And this project has been one that we've been looking at for quite a long time. One of the goals is to open up the Big Daddy's Her property to Lesgo and make it look more park-like, so people know there's actually a park in behind there. We're going to go over kind of some of the call that Ford Culture, King County Ford Culture, was the ones who organized the call to artists. There were 34 artists that we gleaned through, the subcommittee did. Couple of those are here. Lisa Russell from the Park Board, right there. Wayne Fancher from the Park Board. And I don't know if there's anybody else here was on that committee, but. Wayne, yeah, he's back there. Staff Allison Hyde managed the project. And Julie Kruger is involved in all the cool stuff we do in our parks, so she's here as well. So we'll get started on the process here. So it's to be located on Lesgo's property, right off of Auburn Way. I see the oval there where it's intended. I want to make sure I don't jump into yours. And so this is the process. It was $125,000 budget for this project. It's been carried over a couple of years. Each year, the city puts $30,000 to $40,000 into public art. We haven't done a piece the last two years. It's in the capital facilities plan, so it's a budgeted item. The call was to Washington and Oregon artists. I think we had a few others come in that weren't from there potentially. Thirty-two applications. The subcommittee included Patricia Cosgrove from the museum, Greg Watson, Jan Jensen, Nancy Colson, and Wayne and Lisa. And then the consultants who are working on our Lesgo master plan, Guy Michelson was there as well, and Kevin Snyder was involved. The voting members were the non-staff people that actually gave the thumbs up, thumbs down, on all 32 artists, the 32, as well as the rest of the process that we narrowed it down. I have to remember when I'm supposed to stop. It's your turn, Otten, yes.
So we, the committee, which consisted of all the people that Darrell just mentioned, thought a lot about the site and where it is and how people might interact with it. And we wanted to have something that would be an iconic presence that would, as Darrell said, indicate the presence of the park from Auburn Way, to be something that people would say, wow, or that's interesting, or let's stop and have our picture taken with that. And that was some of the guiding principles, that it would be fun, that it would be whimsical, that it could be touchable, that people could walk around it, touch it, whatever it turned out to be, that it would invite that kind of connection from people, and that it would connect to a broad audience. Kids would love it, any age would be engaged by this iconic art piece. And also, that it would be something that could be replicated, whatever it turned out to be, that that could be kind of a theme maybe for the park. It could be duplicated in other locations on a smaller scale, and that sort of idea. So the committee had a very active interaction with the artist when he made his presentations. Nobody was afraid to speak their mind. And we had some healthy differences of opinion, but in the end, we all agreed on what the recommendation would be to the Arts Commission. And our recommendation was accepted by the Arts Commission. And now this is the presentation from the Arts Commission to the Council Planning Committee, and it'll be up to the City Council from here on. So we're going to give you a good overview of what we did, and the artist is here, and he's next.
Okay, well, thanks for having me this evening, getting a chance to meet you folks and talk a little bit about what I do. I'm an artist. I've been doing public art projects as my primary emphasis for over 30 years. And I've done a lot of projects in the Puget Sound region, as well as other parts of the country. And the goal is always to create something that has relevance to that particular site. So the projects are all completely different because the environment is different, the people who use it are different, the architecture, the landscape, all of those things factor into the design process. So I'm just going to show you a couple of examples of some previous work to give you an idea of how I approach things. This particular piece is called Bucket Brigade, is for a fire station in Roswell, Georgia. And so the sculpture itself represents sort of a stop-motion animation of the motion of throwing a bucket of water onto a fire. And it's, sorry, no, that's okay. It incorporates light. You can see the glow coming out of those buckets to represent the water inside. So the piece is functional as sort of a beacon at night, as people pass the fire station. The next piece is at the Pierce County Skills Center in Puyallup, which is essentially a trade school extension of the Bethel School District. High school kids can go here and take classes on any number of trade-related subjects in an effort to teach them skill that they can go out and find employment with. So my sculpture is called Hit or Miss. It's a giant hammer, it's 15 feet tall, that sort of stands in for all of the various tools that would be used to learn a new skill. So it's not specific to any one skill, but sort of an iconic tool. And the title suggests that nobody's perfect, you know. The process of learning a new skill has its ups and downs. So you can see there's a bent nail in the front there. And the nails function as benches, so it becomes sort of a little gathering place right in the middle of the campus. Another fire station project in Albuquerque, Albuquerque, well, New Mexico in general has a long history of rocketry. And so this seemed like a fun way to approach this particular call, to create, for a fire station, to create a rocket ship in the guise of an Albuquerque fire engine. So it's painted with the exact same color scheme and gold leaf lettering and so on that you would see on their fire engines. And it's really a metaphor for the rapid response capabilities of a fire department. It's a little bit sort of futuristic and meant to be serious on one level, but also to have a sense of humor. And coincidentally, I've been doing fire station projects. This one is in Seattle. It's Fire Station Number Nine, which is in Fremont, just right near the Aurora Bridge, just on the north end of the Aurora Bridge. And the station number nine is important because at some point, many, many years ago, the firefighters at this station adopted the old Ever Ready Battery logo as their mascot. And you might remember that. It's a very prominent graphic design of a black cat, very stylized black cat with a lightning bolt tail jumping through the number nine. So I knew, when I first met with the firefighters and started investigating what I was going to do for this project, they kept coming back to this idea of how much they loved that cat. So I figured in some way the cat would be the jumping off point for my concept. And eventually I built this 20-foot-long, three-dimensional black cat with a lightning bolt tail that's, looks like it's stepping off of the roof, maybe, you know, getting ready to jump onto a fire engine to answer a call. And it has glass eyes with LED lights inside, so at night you see the whole face, you see the eyes glowing in the dark. And one last thing I'll say about it is it has heads on, faces on both sides. So that whenever you're passing the station, if you look up, the cat is always looking at you. And I think this is the last example. This is in Kent, at the Willis Street Gateway, and it's called Big Corn. It's meant to represent the history of the Kent Valley as a rich agricultural land, and which is hardly visible these days, it's been so developed. But I wanted to sort of pay homage to the agriculture, agricultural history of the valley in a sort of cartoon way. These are 17 and a half foot tall cornstalks, and each of the corn cobs is about two feet long. So it's quite big.
Nancy's going to give a little reasoning for how the committee went through the crow process, and I think has actually a little poetry for us too.
Yeah. Well, we looked at a number of proposals from Peter. And this image, this crow standing with a french fry in his mouth and his head cocked a little the way crows do when someone's around looking at them, really caught our attention and our fancy, if you will. And it has a scale and the size, and we had all kinds of reactions, really positive reactions to this figure. Couple of things I just wanted to kind of, we talked about crows a lot. And they are, they're truly, have become iconic urbanites, city dwellers. And they are in here and in many places, they're kind of the unofficial cleanup crew for the town. That's one of their functions. And I wanted to read just a little bit about crows. My son-in-law is a middle school science teacher, and his class of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders made this book about everything that lives in Washington, plants, animals, reptiles, fish, and birds. And about crows, the student who wrote this one said, "As far as their diet goes, crows are omnivorous and eat whatever is available, such as insects, spiders, and snails, eggs, nuts, fruit, vegetables, smaller animals, and snakes. However, they will happily feast from animal carcasses and trash cans. They are also known to drop hard-shelled nuts from above onto roads for cars to crack as they drive, and then they come down to eat. Crows are the most adaptable and most intelligent of birds. They are very social birds with a distinct call, as we all know." We, one of the things we liked about the image and the proposal that Peter came up with is the reference, because of the french fry in the crow's mouth, is, for those who know it was there, that's going to be a reference to the drive-in restaurant. For the people who don't know that that was ever there, it still works because it's an iconic image of a crow doing his cleanup job in the city. Now Peter's going to talk a little more about his approach to, you know, constructing it and how it's going to work and all of that sort of thing. But I have, as Darrell said, just happen to have a piece of poetry. And I'd heard Mr. Baggett read some poetry the other day. And so this is called "The Business of Crows" by a man named Joseph Green. "One of them has a discarded half-pint milk carton by its pinched top and is banging it on the sidewalk. Hopping with it, dragging it along, he hefts it with his beak and swings it against the concrete. Then he pauses to inspect his work, to adjust his grip before picking up the carton and smacking it down again. Every time he hits the sidewalk with the empty box, it makes a flat, satisfying plop. Perhaps that's all the crow wants, the hollow report he gets for his labor confirming its emptiness. As for me, I have stopped on my way back to my office to watch a crow's involvement with a milk carton. Sunlight filtering through bare trees stains the bird a dark blue that slips to black like secret ink and makes sense only as his feathers move. What could possibly be more important than this? I have no further excuses."
That's good, I like that one. Well, so I'll just say a few words about the sculpture itself. It's going to be, there's another slide that shows sort of the relative scale in a minute, but this gives you some idea of it. I want it to be really big because there's a lot of traffic flying past there. I want people to be able to see it and be able to recognize instantly what it represents. But without being real, very realist about it in terms of, you know, precision sculpting of a form, I wanted to have a little bit more of an abstract appearance because it's a fabricated mechanical-looking crowbot, I suppose you could term it like that. And it's big, so it's approximately 12 feet high to the top of the head. The french fry box could also be used as seating, so there's a little bench, or maybe even a little, you could sit on it and eat your lunch there. The finish would be a powder-coated finish that's very durable, more durable than wet paint. And in a semi-gloss black finish, it will actually reflect some of the colors around it. So it'll pick up some of the green from the grass and the blue from the sky and so on. And I'm also proposing that, like the black cat that you saw a moment ago, that it have glass eyes with LED lights inside, so that at night the eyes will glow. And then I'm also proposing that we put some uplights in the ground surrounding this thing so that the sculpture itself is at least partially illuminated, so that it takes on a presence and also a function at night. And also incorporating lighting does reduce the vandalism potential somewhat. You can, could you go back one, Darrell? You can maybe see a little bit here. I'm suggesting that we may need to create a little bit of a plaza area underneath it, some kind of a paving, or Darrell was mentioning maybe a.
Synthetic grass or something.
Synthetic grass, something underneath there. So, because otherwise, from maintenance point of view, it'd be very difficult to mow around it, so to keep that area clear underneath. But it would have a substantial concrete footing underneath it, so. Yeah, any questions about that?
Yeah, on the tail end, will people or children be able to climb on that?
I think people would be able to get onto the tail of it a little bit, but it's just a slope.
Congratulations.
Tail, and the tail will actually touch the ground because there has, just structurally, there has to be a third mounting point between the two legs and the, to sort of triangulate it. But it would be a very gentle slope. But it would be a very gentle slope, and I don't think it's possible to climb onto it completely.
That's just my only concern.
The, uh, the box. I, I looked at that box, and I said, "God, it'd be great if there was a park bench where people could eat their lunch." And you did say that, but looking at it, the, uh, seating part looks like it's going down this way rather than...
Well, I think maybe it's just a question of scale, because I envisioned the top of the box being only a couple of feet above the ground. That, the largest flat surface of that box is only about two feet high.
So it won't be, you couldn't, uh, have an eating area there?
No, I wasn't really proposing a...
More of a bench than a table.
Eating area per se, just suggesting that people would probably naturally sit there and, and use that, use it that way.
Now, is that seating on both sides?
No, I'm suggesting the seating just sitting on the top of it, as if it's...
Oh, sitting on top of it?
Right.
Oh, and then the other would be for your feet then, or whatever.
Well, those are the folds in the box.
Oh, okay.
It's not, that drawing doesn't give you enough detail, clearly, but I'm, but I'm just talking about the, the top surface of the box being the seating area.
Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Any other questions?
So the process from here is we have an ordinance prepared that author, that would authorize the mayor into, into a contract with Peter upon your concurrence next week at city council, so we'll have it before you next Tuesday. I think Monday's a holiday.
Twenty is.
So, um, we appreciate, um, the process, and I think it's really, I know that the committee that was on it really appreciated, um, being involved in it as well.
Exactly.
Councilmember Brown has a question.
Yeah, the structure that's, uh, adjacent to the fries, um, I'm just guessing, but is that, uh, paying homage to maybe a drive-in? Is that what that was intended?
Exactly, as a matter of fact, that is a relic of the drive-in, the drive-in restaurant that stood on that site. That was the, that was the awning where the cars pulled in. So the framework's been...
It's the actual.
It's the actual one. It's the actual one, and it's the actual place, it hasn't been moved.
Oh, that's cool.
And, um, I, I found that a very intriguing aspect of the site, and so I wanted to sort of incorporate that in some way, at least conceptually, so the crow and the fries sort of tied into that drive-in.
Councilmember Holman.
Prior to Big Daddy's, that was Rolf's Triple X.
That's right.
Councilmember Dick Carson.
I really liked the plaza, um, presentation. I think that really enhances the piece itself, and like Councilmember Pelosi said, it gives people a chance to kind of meander around it and congregate around it. So my question is, um, the fabrication installation period, how long is it gonna take?
There's a, the fabrication itself will take me about three months, and the installation is a matter of days. But before the fabrication phase, there's, there needs to be some fleshing out of the structure and how I'm gonna make this thing, and consultation with my structural engineer. So that's all part of my process, and that, that can take a few months also, depending on people's schedules. So, but realistically, um, from the time, typically from the time I sign a contract for a commission, it's about a year.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
You know, I really like this concept because every morning I get up, there's hundreds, and I mean hundreds of these crows all over my front yard.
I'd be a murder of crows.
I'm still coming back to the tail and the wings. According to this, how, how wide are they? You know, I'm, I'm concerned about safety here.
Right.
And, uh, on this, on that photo, it looks like the wings are pretty pointed, and, um, can the kids also climb on those and jump off?
Well...
That's the, you know...
I think, this, this is part of the reason why I have to go to the next phase of really fine-tuning things, is to, um, really look at how those shapes come together. There won't be sharp edges, and there won't be sharp points, because that's not, not safe, obviously. I've, you can probably see from this particular image versus the other one, I've already tapered the tail even more so, so that it, there's less surface area to climb on. That, that one, that sketch looks more like a slide sort of situation. But safety is, is always a concern of mine, and when I put work out in public places, I expect to be responsible and design it in a way that it's, you know, it's not a hazard to people.
I would anticipate a selfie stick and a family of three or whatever being on the tail of it or whatever. So we wanted it to be interactive, but I don't think we want it to be a slide, so there's gonna be some engineering involved to make it work.
Never underestimate the...
These kids.
Our children, because they will find a way.
Believe me, he knows. So, may I add, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, once all the discussion was done, both at the committee level, all the participants on the committee, and the Arts Commission itself, it was unanimous vote in both places, and, and lots of smiles. People really love this, love the, what Peter came up with.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Well, uh, we are cro, in the crow country. Because on Fifteenth, they all come in and buy the Emerald Downs, all those trees inside, they just migrate. So this is a perfect theme for Auburn. Perfect, perfect. Regarding the platform that was suggested, full grass, I think, would be more maintenance than either solid concrete or, um, pavers.
I, I think that might be true. It's gonna require some investigation on my part and, and some discussion with Daryl and others about the best solution.
I would, I would opt more for solid concrete because pavers, dirt gets in the cracks, the joint, you know, where they join, 'cause I have those in my, on my patio, and I know all about moss and weeds and, and power washing, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good job, good job. And thank you for the commission. All the hard work you guys...
I was gonna invite them up, so...
Yeah, oh yeah.
King County Draft Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
Meg Moorhead and Dorian Waller from King County Solid Waste.
Yes, um, so, as the council knows, I'm on the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. And so this has been, this comprehensive, uh, plan has been under works over a year, and it is very complex, and it's very, very important. So I just, I suggested to Joan that we set this up on a study session, so that you all will get the benefit of some good comprehensive discussion from King County. Thank you.
Thanks, technological difficulties, hi. I'm Meg Moorhead, Strategy Communications and Performance Manager for King County Solid Waste. I'm here to talk to you about a plan, is it not working? Oh, okay. About a plan that is under, uh, public review right now, and it's a, it's a plan that will guide the future of our regional solid waste system for the next six to 20 years. And it is not just a King County plan guiding our actions, but also a plan done on behalf of our 37 partner cities. Auburn and 36 other cities are, uh, work with us to develop the plan. Only the cities of Milton and Seattle are not part of our King County system. So, it's a policy roadmap for what we do in terms of disposing waste, recycling, um, transferring waste. The goal is to have something that works for everyone, provides a policy framework for us all to work together towards common goals. The plan's required by state law, and it's also required under inter-local agreement between the cities and the county. It's currently out for public review, went out on Ja- January 8th, and will, the public review period closes on March 8th. That's 60 days, that's twice the, uh, review time that's required by state law, so we're really looking for public comments at this point from the cities and other members of the community. Our last plan was adopted in 2001, so it's been a long time in the making to come up with a new plan. And it's been through a very extensive review process so far with our two advisory committees, our, um, Solid Waste Advisory Committee and our Metropolitan, um, Advisory Committee with our municipal partners. It has both, I will hold it up, both the plan is out for review, which is all of the policies, but also a draft environmental impact statement, so both things have the opportunity for comment.
Councilmember Pelosi.
And, um, I, I brought one of those back from the last, we have one on our mail counter. Just like the one she showed.
So some places that I go, um, folks don't, didn't quite, some places I go, people don't quite know what the, uh, parts of the regional system are. And so here, this is, um, we serve about 1.4 million people in both incorporated and unincorporated King County. The county is a wholesale service provider. We don't provide curbside garbage pickup. That's done by our, um, private haulers under contract to cities or under state regulation in the unincorporated areas, or that's done by a couple of cities directly by themselves. So what we do is we operate eight urban transfer stations. That's where the, uh, collection trucks take the garbage that's collected curbside and consolidate it for transfer up to our county landfill outside of Maple Valley. That's the last active landfill in King County. So we also have nine closed landfills that the county monitors and maintains, uh, for, for public health and environmental quality. Cities, what do you do? Well, you provide the contracts or direct curbside collection, um, services, and you also work with the county and other regional partners on recycling policies and programs. And then we rely as part of this regional, um, system on private sector participation, not just the curbside haulers, but also, um, we have processing of recyclables and organics, and that's all done by the private sector. So it's a combination, city, county, public, private, um, solid waste system that is covered in the plan. There are six major elements in the plan, and these are all required under state law. We're looking at, um, just basically how, what's, what are the pieces of our system? How do we forecast and evaluate it? Really, the three big, uh, issues that we've been focusing public comment on are the recycling, or here called sustainable materials management, uh, the transfer choices in the system, and then also disposal of garbage. This is the first time that the county's been able to bring in a couple of initiatives that have, uh, been undertaken since 2001. Back in 2001, some, um, issues such as climate protection weren't as strongly on the public, um, radar screen as they are today, and this plan has policies that allow us to consider, consider climate protection as part of our decision-making in the future. It also has policies that allow us to consider equity and social justice, which has come in as a strong county initiative, um, that's also been supported by the cities.
Excuse me, um, how was that social justice, uh, expressed?
Yeah, you know, this is all about, do, are we fairly providing services to all, um, areas of our service area and all members of our community? And, uh, so we don't want to unfairly disadvantage any one community by, for example, concentrating all facilities in that place. We also don't want to unfairly disadvantage, uh, communities by not placing facilities close enough for people to be able to easily access them. You'll see later, we have, uh, financial policies that, um, continue our practice of having the same rates all the way across our regional system, but allow us options for having differential rates if, if, um, that's a choice that's made.
How many languages do you have, all of your material?
Okay, these materials are, and we'll get into some of our outreach materials later, but, um, uh, the outreach materials, we've got a survey, for example, on our website that's in Spanish. We also have handouts that are available on the website for any city to download or, that are being handed out at all of our transfer stations that are in both English and Spanish. There are, uh, there's, uh, notification on the website that if anyone needs interpretation at one of our open houses that we conduct, if they call us in advance, we can have interpreters there and, available, plus interpretation is available if they call us. We can connect them up with interpretation services through the county. So let's start with recycling, um, or sustainable materials management. And our, our regulators, the Department of Ecology, they're the ones that approve the plan, and they use this term sustainable materials management, which is trying to get at the full life cycle of the materials. And they, surprisingly, we've been working with our advisory committees, um, on a goal of 70% recycling, and that's recycling 70% of all of the materials that come through our regional system, both, um, in the cities and in the county. Right now, we're only at 52%. And this 70% interim goal has not been adopted formally in the past, so this'll be the first time that our comprehensive plan includes it. Why do we think that we can get to 70%? Well, if you just look at the component that's landfill today, about 70% of what's in the land, going to the landfill could be recycled, composted easily, or potentially recyclable if the, if the markets, uh, were to be a little bit stronger. So already, we're landfilling a lot of material that has economic value. And the plan is, presents a menu of actions that different jurisdictions can take to achieve different goals. It emphasizes preventing waste and reusing, uh, products so that they don't come into the regional system to begin with. Also includes recycling and composting as goals. It, it has tools, uh, like education, which is widely used to promote recycling in our region. Also incentives like grants that are available to cities for recycling programs. Mandates like, uh, pre, or banning the disposal of yard waste in garbage is an example of a mandate that's available to the different jurisdictions. And then infrastructure improvements, like providing, uh, recycling at our regional transfer stations. It's a menu of actions, it provides all the jurisdictions lots of choices, it doesn't mandate that we all do all of these actions. We got a lot of feedback from our cities that said that the, everybody's at a different starting point and has different needs. You know, Algonah is currently at 30-something percent recycling in their jurisdiction, whereas other jurisdictions like Bellevue and others are up above 60%, so they're both at different starting points. We have communities that are strongly commercially oriented, like Tugwila, uh, with South Center, and then we've got others that are largely single-family residential, and so they felt that they needed to have the flexibility to choose from this menu the things that work best for their jurisdiction.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So, uh, are we at 47% recycling?
Um, City of Auburn?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know, I can find that. Out we have...
Yeah, we're, we're in like the, probably right around the 50% when we average our, the haulers together.
Yeah, thank you. I should know it for every city, but I sometimes forget.
I, I, I thought it was high 40s or...
Yeah. Right. And, and so the advantage of this approach is it gives lots of flexibility. The disadvantage is if we have a goal of 70% recycling and everybody is doing their own thing without agreeing to a timeframe, then we don't know exactly when we're going to reach that 70%. So let's talk about, um, the next section, which is transfer of the waste, and these are largely the, the county's transfer stations. And, um, the structure of the draft plan, the public draft plan, is a little bit different than past plans where, um, recommendations were made in the transfer and the disposal chapters. In this public review draft, we're... In this public review draft, we're asking for public input on which choices we should recommend. So in transfer, you'll see three choices that we'll discuss in a minute about the transfer services in the northeast county. Just to give you a sense of our different stations and how much material is moving through each of those stations in a given year, here in two thousand sixteen, these are all of the stations that the county operates with thousands of tons kind of on the vertical scale. You can see Bow Lake is our biggest station. It's the one that you see just east of the highway as you come through Tugwila on I-5. It takes about a third of the county's waste is consolidated for transfer up to the landfill from that station. But then you can see we've got a number of other stations that handle a lot of waste. Houghton in Kirkland, that's our northeast area, is the second largest number of tons being handled, and that's also one of our biggest growth areas. And then you can see Algonah now called South County, we're in the midst of redeveloping a larger modern station there, and then a number of other stations. We've been undergoing a modernization program because a lot of these originally were built in the nineteen-sixties. They had open sides, short roofs. That means that the roofs are too short for modern, were too short for modern equipment. The open sides meant that it's harder to control noise and odor. There wasn't compaction with the old stations, and compaction allows you to have fewer trips, truck trips to the landfill because you're packing more into each truck. Recycling options were sometimes a problem. So here at the modernized station, this is our new Hectoria Station outside of Bellevue. We've, this modernization program is for customer convenience, having a facility big enough for everybody to be able to get through quickly without having the commercial traffic interfere with the self-haul traffic, faster unloading, more recycling choices, compaction, which can reduce truck trips out of the station by a third. And then sustainable building design and operation. So these are done according to energy-efficient standards with reused building materials so that we're really making these more efficient to operate over the long haul. But there's a big question. Modernization has either been conducted or is underway in almost every part of the county system, except for the very last part, which is the northeast area, the area in green up here, kind of northeast of Kirkland. It's the last one where the final decision to modernize the station has not been made. The South County station's already underway in the city of Algonah. So northeast is the very last station. So the question is still available. Should we just stick with Houghton, the old Houghton Station as it is, without the recycling and compaction and, you know, noise and odor containment within an enclosed building? Do we build a new northeast station, which had been recommended back in two thousand seven through a transfer plan, and that would allow all the modern conveniences to be available in a northeast area? Or do we do some combination, like maybe keep the old Houghton Station for self-haulers and build a smaller commercially-oriented station somewhere else in the northeast? We're looking for public input on each of these. By the time we get the public input, we hope to come down to one solution before it goes to the county council for decision. Okay, disposal. Similar to the transfer station, we're offering options here for public input instead of making one recommendation. We have a landfill, a local landfill we've been using for fifty years. It's been a great local, cost-effective solution for the region. We collect landfill gas and refine it into renewable energy. But it's, the currently permitted capacity there is going to run out. We predict right now it's going to run out in two thousand twenty-eight, and this kind of shows the, you know, how quickly we are going to work through the existing capacity. And so it's, under our inter-local agreements, the county's responsible for providing disposal services to the cities and the unincorporated area through two thousand forty. So we have a gap between the disposal in this current cell of the landfill and what we need to provide through the inter-local agreements. You know, so we have three different options that we're offering in the plan for meeting that, or filling that gap. One is to develop further capacity at Cedar Hills. We're going to be monitoring and maintaining that landfill for many years to come because we're regulated by the state and federal regulations to keep our eye on it. So the question is, should we spend some money to build some more capacity and squeeze some more value out of the landfill before we move to something else? And that has the advantage of being, having lower costs, also more predictability because we've been doing it for fifty years. It would require, it has some challenges, too. It would require some redoing of our permitting to go higher than we currently are allowed. We need to continue to be good neighbors to our landfill residents adjacent to the landfill. We need to relocate the buildings. You see buildings, kind of, there's a picture there of our landfill. There are buildings that are sitting on top of areas that are permitted for refuse. And so we would need to move those buildings so that we could use that area for refuse. So that's the further develop Cedar Hills option. We could also do what our, some of our regional neighbors do, which City of Seattle, Snohomish County, they export their waste by rail to out-of-county landfills. And so it's a proven alternative. Several regional landfills have sufficient capacity for our waste for many, many years to come. It would move a significant part of the county's operations to the private sector because typically you would have one competitively bid contract, and that contract would provide for the transfer of waste from trucks to rail cars, and then the long-haul transport on rail of those containers, and then the unloading at the far end and disposal at an out-of-county landfill. So you'd have a, one contract with all sorts of components to it. It has, you know, to do that option, we'd have to modify our transfer stations so that they were rail-ready. Things like compaction make a difference. You'd be sending fewer containers if you compact them than if you didn't. We'd need lead time to get the contracts and the division operations in order. And you have issues like rail capacity and weather-related rail disruptions that would need to be contended with, so.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Chair. Could you provide me with some sort of comparison between what we're paying in King County per ton and what Seattle pays per ton, or any other comparison between the two? How much more expensive is it to put it on a rail and send it to Oregon?
In the next slide, you'll see. Because cost clearly is, you know, cost isn't the only factor that we look at. We also look at how does it support our regional recycling rates? What's the environmental benefit in terms of energy production or, you know, reduction of environmental impacts? But cost is clearly important to our ratepayers, and so the next slide will kind of show where that's at.
You answered part of my question about the rail.
Yeah.
How far or where would our garbage go to from Algonah? And what's the closest rail?
Yeah, the, you know, there are a number of intermodal facilities in the region where you transfer the truck containers to the rail. One example is in South Seattle, the Argo facility. On the far end, there are, it's usually in eastern Oregon, eastern Washington, that kind of arid rural areas have, I think there are four or five landfills that are within three or four hundred miles that are reachable by rail.
Would that add an extra cost on our citizens?
Yeah, you'll see the cost in the next slide, and because you're, you have that extra cost of transport, there is that.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, you actually answered the question.
And then a third option is building a waste-to-energy facility, and we had a consultant look at this. They, there are several different technologies. The technology they thought was a best fit for our situation was what's called a mass burn facility. It basically burns the waste, produces electricity, and reduces the volume of what goes in by ninety percent and the weight of what goes in by about seventy-five percent. It has an advantage of potentially increasing our recycling rate by as much as two percent because you can recover metal from ash.
Is that burning of that garbage and trash, does that result in an environmental problem?
You know, you can read about that in the draft environmental impact statement, which concludes that we have state regulations about air quality emissions, and facilities that meet those state emission standards are not expected to have significant adverse environmental effects.
One of the byproducts of the energy is methane gas?
They, that's the landfill, the landfill gas that we collect at the landfill and refine to, into renewable natural gas. What they're doing here is they're burning it and recovering the heat to create electricity. Yeah, so it's a different kind of electricity, you know, or different kind of energy recovery. So some of the challenges, you heard some of the benefits. You know, some of the challenges include facility siting, finding a forty-some acre site for this. Cost, needing to guarantee consistent quantity of feedstock to keep it running efficiently. Having possible shutdowns when some waste can't go through the facility because it's either not burnable or you have to shut the facility down for maintenance. So you need to have, a parallel export system is assumed to take the ash, which is, you know, twenty-five percent of the tons are going to come out as ash. And also the ways that can't be burned in the facility would be exported to an out-of-county landfill. Ash needs to be disposed in what they call a monofil, a special kind of landfill, and so that needs to be taken into consideration, too. With the rail, with that rail component, it also has the rail capacity issues that, and the weather-related rail issues that you would see in an export solution. Okay, so you've been very eager to get to the costs, so let's, let's show the costs. The lower line is the cost of operating the landfill today, and then virtually right on top of it is the cost of adding capacity there and getting the landfill to last what we think will be through about two thousand forty. We're always adjusting, just so that you understand, our business runs with the economy. So in good times, people buy a lot of stuff and throw away a lot of stuff, right? So we get lots of material through our system, which means the price per unit is lower, right? In bad times, people hold on to their stuff, don't buy new things, and our tons go down and so do our revenues. So we're always adjusting the kind of expiration date of the landfill because it depends on the economy, how much stuff is showing up on our doorstep due to the economy. So the red line on the bottom is the estimate, that's the dollars per ton, and that's just the disposal component of our rate. Our rate's currently about one, well, it's exactly one thirty-four fifty-nine per ton. Everybody pays the same amount, and about forty of that is disposal cost at this point. So this is just, this is showing the total rate with these different alternatives, but just the disposal component of it. So if you look at the green line, the question about export, we used for the sake of this plan an assumption that we would have an export system very similar to the city of Seattle's, that we would use the pricing that they managed to negotiate and have the same sort of components in terms of intermodal transfer and out-of-county landfill that they have. And you can see it's, it's higher than what using our existing landfill is, and it increases with inflation, which is how the Seattle contract works.
Councilmember Brown.
Did you take a look at the Snohomish County model?
Yes, we did, and, and it's very similar sort of approach, you know, contract and put a lot of the risk of, you know, disruption, that sort of thing on the contract. And, but we felt that the Seattle prices were a closer comparison to our metropolitan area prices. And then you can see, the blue line on top represents the cost for waste-to-energy. And, you know, some people go, wow, why is it so different when waste-to-energy has been a very successful technology used in Europe and also elsewhere in the U.S., places like Florida? Well, some of the things that are unique to our region is that electricity is sold to offset some of the cost. Where do we get our electricity here? You know, very cheap hydropower. So, you know, other places like Florida, they're displacing oil or coal-fired plants that produce electricity, they're selling it into a high, high-priced energy market. We don't have that high-priced market to offset the cost. Other things, Florida has shallow groundwater, and so it doesn't have the landfilling option, so that's not as much of an option. So there's some things that work in favor of this technology elsewhere don't quite have the same advantage, like in Europe, you can use the ash for building products, that sort of thing. Here in Washington State, that's not allowed. You could do a change in law to allow it, but right now it isn't. So some of those factors all come into play so they're not counterbalancing the cost of the, the capital cost of the facility, which is really the biggest part of that cost.
Councilmember Troutman.
So Maggie, the green and the blue are, we're going to be starting after two thousand twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's because you saw the earlier graph where we said we've got, we've built capacity already in our landfill that'll take us, we think, through two thousand twenty-eight. So the green and the blue would just start after we filled up that capacity that we've already built, and then, then it would step up to something else. The, if we built extra, new capacity at Cedar Hills to get us through two thousand forty, we would still be at a point after that where we would need to find another alternative. It could be waste-to-energy, could be export, because the county has passed ordinances saying we're not going to build a new landfill here in King County. So really, once, whether we expand the landfill now or not, there will eventually be a choice to be made about what we do next on disposal. If we wait till two thousand forty, we'll have a little bit more time to plan and see technological advancements.
No, you have your work cut out for you for the next ten years.
He's been, he's been an avid participant, a very active participant in our advisory committees, and we so much appreciate his voice at the table.
Keeps us well-informed.
I, I hope so, I'm sure that he does. We focused on recycling, transfer, and disposal choices, but I just want to point out, we've got a couple more things going on in, in the plan, things like policies around our existing system. One thing that we might want to point out is that the finance chapter does allow us to continue to charge for our services the way we do today, which is almost all based on the per-ton fee charged at our transfer stations. But it also gives us some other options, looking at whether other components of the fee could be added to help account for increased recycling, which will reduce the number of units coming through our system and reduce our revenues. Also allows us to consider a low-income rate, which has been of long interest to the county. So where are we at? Boy, this is one heck of a long process. Two thousand sixteen is when we started working with our com- Two thousand sixteen is when we started working with our committees, and we spent more than a year working with them to get the plan to the point where the committee said, yes, it's ready for public review. And we're currently right in the middle of this graphic in the sixty-day public review period, it closes March eighth. The state gets a concurrent review, but they get a hundred and twenty days by state law. So, they started their review at the same time as the public, but theirs will go on twice as long as the public review. After we have both the public and the, the state input, then we'll revise the plan before submitting it to the county council for adoption. Once it gets into the county council's hand, they have their own process to work their way through. We've been talking to them about what exactly that process will be. It may be as late as early 2019 before they're able to play out the process. Once the county adopts it, then they pass it on to the cities for action, likely in early 2019, and you get a hundred and twenty days. After the critical mass of cities act on it and approve, then the state gives final approval. One thing I'd like to mention is, the later in the process you bring in big concerns about the plan, the harder it is to get them addressed because, you know, once the county council acts and it goes to thirty-seven cities for action, it's hard for any one city to say, oh, wait a minute, because we've got all these other jurisdictions that are, have it under concurrent review. So, so now during that sixty-day review period is really the, the best time to get your concerns on rec, any issues, issues or support on record.
How is the feedback coming so far? Are you getting a lot of comment?
You know, we, we are. We just, you'll see, we just completed three open houses. We had one north, east, and south. We did it in the middle of the comment period, so people would have a chance to do, read it, come and ask some questions, and then still have some time to write up their comments. We have a website, and here's the web address for it, where we've got a whole bunch of information, links to the plans, to summaries, to information sheets. We've got videos there that describe short snippets about each of the major issues. There's an online survey that you can take to kind of tell us what you think. But most importantly, it's, there's a link to the email address where if you want to make formal written comments on either the plan or the EIS, there's your opportunity. You don't have to go electronically, if you'd rather send a letter just by plain old U.S. mail, we welcome that. And we've got the online survey, over two hundred respondents, and so we're, we're getting pretty good input, but there's still a lot more opportunity. And here are the three open houses, it's a little late for folks, but just because you didn't have a, a chance to come to the open house doesn't mean that you can't go on our website, or certainly any jurisdiction, we're happy to answer questions. So.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Great job.
Thank you.
So now you guys know why I've been such an advocate of mattresses staying out of the landfill, especially the box spring, because when they have these big old earth movers pushing that stuff down, two weeks later, the springs pop back up again. And then trying to keep styrofoam and tires out of landfill. So there's a lot and lot of recycling opportunities yet to come.
There are.
Any other questions? Councilmember.
Not a question, just a thank you to my colleague, Mr. Pelosi. Everything I know about solid waste, I've learned from you.
Well, I feed you guys solid wastes.
I noticed. I'm meaning to talk to you.
Sort of thing.
Also, Joan here, she is sharp as a tack on solid waste. She knows what's going on, and I've learned a lot from Joan, so.
Meg, Joan, thank you. Okay, I guess we're going to go back to the regular agenda, item C, which is the ordinance number sixty-six seventy.
I don't have any fancy slides or presentations, but. Evening Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Amber Price, Engineering Aid with Community Development and Public Works Department. Franchise agreement number twelve dash forty-one for Zayo Group LLC is for telecommunications facilities that are currently in the city's right-of-way. The current franchise agreement under ordinance number sixty-four fifty-two is set to expire on April eleventh, twenty eighteen, and allows for one renewal term of five years. Upon a review of the current agreement, city staff and Zayo have determined that the language still meets both parties' needs, with only a minor amendment to update Zayo's contact information. Those changes are shown on page thirty-six of two oh one of your agenda packet. The current agreement requires that Zayo obtains construction permits so that they can make repairs, upgrades, and improvements to their existing and future facilities. These permits are reviewed and approved and managed through the city's permitting process. Currently, there's a public hearing scheduled for this renewal on Tuesday, February twentieth. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the agreement.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Moving right along, item three D, it's the NPDES Annual Report on Stormwater Management Program.
Good evening, Council Chair and Councilmembers. My name's Tim Carla, I'm the City's Storm Drainage Engineer, and with me this evening I have Chris Thorne, our Water Quality Programs Coordinator, and we're going to talk about our Stormwater Management Program Plan and our two thousand and seventeen annual report as required through our NPDES permit. So Chris is going to lead us through a PowerPoint presentation that really encompasses both of those two subjects into the overview, and we'll answer any questions along the way or at the end that you may have. So, thank you.
We don't have that presentation, do we?
No, you do not have this presentation. So, it's, it's pretty much just pictures. So, as Tim mentioned, I'm Chris Thorne with the City of Auburn Community Development and Public Works Department. I'm the Water Quality Programs Coordinator for the Utility Section, and we're here to talk about the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit issued to the city by the Department of Ecology. This permit requires that the city develop or submit an annual report each year, talking about what they have done in the previous year, and part of that is also to attach a stormwater management program, or water management program plan, which outlines what we're going to be doing during the current year. So that's, again, why we're here. The permit requires in our Stormwater Management Program Plan that we have various elements to develop, or that constitutes our stormwater program. These include public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge, detection and elimination, controlling runoff from development, redevelopment, and new construction, municipal operations and maintenance, and some other items like compliance with total maximum daily loads and, and monitoring and assessment. So, just to kind of go over those elements, I'm going to be covering them, both what we're, what we've done last year, part of our annual report, and what we are going to be doing this year. So, starting with public education and outreach, last year we had a very successful year. We continued our spill kit program, which is conducted by ECOS, the Environmental Coalition of South Seattle. They go out to businesses in town and talk to the business managers and operators about pollution prevention. They visited a hundred and seven businesses in Auburn last year, and of those businesses, forty-three percent of them spoke English as a second language. That's a very good program that we really enjoy participating in because they can talk to a lot of people that we would have difficulty communicating with, and provide information in languages that we don't really have resources to, to provide. So, we continued our National Yard Care Workshops. We held three workshops in the Lakeland Hills neighborhood. We reached fifty-nine unique households. We continued our stewardship program through the Environmental Services Group. They had thirty-three volunteers help with work at the environmental park, you know, plantings, maintenance, pulling weeds, putting mulch down, that type of thing. We participated in the newspapers and education program with a coalition of regional municipalities and put out a supplement on salmon and stormwater. And we continued our water festival program. We, we sponsored four hundred and eight students from Lakeland Hills Elementary and Terminal Park Elementary to go to a, a one-day field trip to learn about water and stormwater. So in the upcoming year, we're going to be continuing the, the spill kit program, the outreach to businesses utilizing ECOS. We are starting a new school education program, so we are going to be having professional presenters go and present in school classrooms in Auburn. So far, last I heard, we had eighteen presentations scheduled, so we think that that's going to be a very good program to get the education to the students.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question.
How about education to the mother and father and grandparents?
One thing that, that has been shown is that when you teach the kids, they take that home, and they talk about it at home with their parents, with their grandparents. So I think we're.
I'd highly recommend that you think about the adults.
Councilmember Brown. Yes, Councilman Pelosi, I would tell you that my kids, when they came home from school, and they had been taught some issues of recycling, and we had to judiciously recycle. The kids help, help enforce that within the house because they want to do the right thing, and they're thinking about their future, so I, I do agree, materials for the parents would be good, too, probably. That's good to hear, though. Councilmember Trout.
I'm on the Blue Ribbon Committee, and we've been working a lot with Gilda Ray's Hispanic community, and we just did a class, they did a class to teach their, the children's parents' English, but then we followed up with the training, we did a CPR class, we had the parents and the children there to teach them about how to do CPR on an infant and then on adult. So it was kind of, you know, nice also to do, like Mr. Pelosi said, also teach the parents in, in the second language.
Okay.
Because that's the way they're gonna, they don't normally read the material that's brought home, so it'd be nice to do an educational with the people with, um, the second language.
Councilmember Pelosi.
You know, a thought occurred to me, we have this new civic program for adults to attend, maybe we could add a little blurb on educating in the civic course that we are now.
Civic academy.
I think that this would fit really nicely in there.
And not all of our residents have school-aged children out there, so it might be good to, to reach that, that group.
Yes.
I'm probably one of them.
Yes, and, and this, this program is just one of the many things. I mean, we will still be putting articles in the Auburn Magazine and doing other outreach as necessary. This was just a, a new program that we were starting this year, and I'm sure that you knew that it was going to be out. Further questions? Okay. Another element of our Stormwater Management Program is illicit discharge detection and elimination. A lot of that is responding to illicit discharges, anything from spills, illicit connections. Another part of that is keeping our stormwater mapping up to date, so a big portion of it is our asset management program. We have a crew of two field staff and other office staff working to keep our storm, storm maps up to date. We're still working on that. Last year, they covered approximately fifteen percent of the city, bringing those areas up to date. And as far as responding to reports of illicit discharges, we had forty-eight reports last year that we responded to. Most of those are vehicle accident-related incidents. And in two thousand and eighteen, we will continue with the inventory process, and we'll continue to respond to reports as necessary for illicit discharges.
Councilmember?
No, no, no.
Further element of our stormwa, stormwater program is controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment, and construction sites. So that covers everything from having ordinance to regulate development, having a storm drainage manual that outlines how development is to occur and manage stormwater, the requirements for storm ponds for low-impact development, erosion control on construction sites, the inspections, the review, all of that sort of stuff is covered. In two thousand and seventeen, we reviewed two hundred and thirty-two site plans and for proposed developments, and we had a hundred and five sites that we inspected during construction. So that will continue on into the next, next year. We're required to have a municipal operations and maintenance stormwater element to our Stormwater Management Program Plan, and that includes inspections and maintaining the storm system. In two thousand and eighteen, we were required, or two thousand and seventeen, we were required to complete a four-year process to inspect our entire system of catch basins. And so we completed that. Once we do the inspections, if there's maintenance that's required, we have six months to do that maintenance, so we're currently finishing up the maintenance that we found when we did inspections. Starting in August of last year, we were required to go to a two-year inspection cycle. So we have to inspect all of our catch basins in two years, and we currently have about ninety-seven hundred catch basins in the city. Let's see, going beyond that, where we are right now, we are working towards adopting our Stormwater Management Program Plan. We are beginning the public review process today, and on March fifth, we will be back for a public hearing on the, on the Stormwater Management Program Plan. And then on March nineteenth, we will be coming back with a resolution to adopt and then submit to Ecology by March thirty-first. And, and one thing that I, I realize now I neglected to say was, our stormwater management, or our stormwater permit is a five-year permit. It is actually scheduled, was scheduled to end this year, but the state has extended it for a year, so it will not be, so we have another year, and what that means is that our Stormwater Management Plan that we had last year pretty much has just carried over for another year with new requirements. And that date is August. Yep. That's the magic date for the NPDES permit is August, essentially August one for us. So it's kind of confusing, it doesn't end with the calendar year, so it's a little bit overlap there.
Another suggestion, just for outreach, as, as president of a homeowner association, I would, I would think that this kind of information that you've got here electronically would be good that they should share. And I will, if I can get a copy of this, I will be more than happy to share this with my neighbors. Anybody else would like a copy of this?
I have, I have their annual plan, which.
I think this presentation, you know, pictures where. I think this presentation, you know, pictures worth a thousand words. I think this is really a good presentation that people could relate to. And I've got all their emails.
It's a nice-looking blue heron.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, I just want to say how much I appreciated the information, the presentation, and was very impressed with the answers to question twenty and the kind of response the city makes. As a new city council member, I just have to say that there's a lot that goes on that most of us don't recognize. Just want to acknowledge that work. I know there must be a lot that goes into it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Hey, you guys probably don't know this, Regional Water Quality Committee, right here. So, she'll be really studying about all this in DPDs. Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the annual report.
Yes, sir.
You talk about ten hotline calls received.
Correct.
Any consequences on something like that? Can you just give us a quick executive summary?
Executive summary, most of those were calls regarding spills. And so, yes.
Which probably have already been covered in the body of the report.
Correct, yes. And that, it's just, the way the question is asked, they ask, you know, what are your hotline calls? And so, our hotline number is MNO. So, if MNO gets a call from typically a citizen, and we respond, then I log that as a hotline call. We also receive calls directly from the police department, from the fire department.
So, and citizens.
From citizens, staff, if they...
Do you get anything from MGO?
We can get them through MGO. You know, staff, a lot of times, will just call us directly. So, we're still receiving the calls, they just are not coming in through the hotline.
Another question?
Certainly.
Look at item number sixty-one. It talks about permit section G3, George Three. And it says there's thirteen, fifteen questions. They were provided, notifications were provided to ecology.
Yes. So, if a, if we decide that a spill warrants notifying ecology, I mean, if it's a very small spill, we clean it up, we record it in our files, it's not that big of a deal. If it's a little bit larger, if it potentially could get into the storm system, rather than just being contained on the street surface, then we contact the Department of Ecology. So, that is a G3 notification. So, it's just, it says that we think that it could constitute a threat to health, public health, or the environment.
I may have mentioned this before, but this is education 101 on water. The Clean Water Act was created by Congress because in Cleveland, Ohio, the Cuyahoga River, I probably didn't pronounce that correctly, had so much oil in it, it was on fire. And that's why the Clean Water Act. Can you just cover real briefly for us all again, the MS fours, that policy?
The MS four is the municipal separate storm water system or storm drainage system. So, it's a, in this case, it's a publicly-owned storm drainage system, so in our case, being operated by the City of Auburn, that is separate from a combined sewer system. So, some places, like in Seattle, they have combined systems where storm drainage and sanitary sewage are in the same pipe underground. So, this is a separate storm system, so it's stormwater only, and it's municipally operated.
So, and we operate it? We operate it?
We operate ours, yes.
So, I'd like to see a pipe flow, you must have a chart that shows that system within the City of Auburn. And does that drain into Metro, then?
No.
No.
This drains to the rivers, streams, wetlands.
So...
This is our storm drainage system. All of our outfalls to the rivers, all of our pipe networks, catch basins, manholes, that's all the series.
That's the MS four.
And components of the MS four. The MS four is the storm drainage system.
And those are monitored?
In what sense?
Detection, detection of...
No, we do not monitor the end of our pipes.
Why not?
It's very expensive. It's difficult to monitor storm drainage. I mean, there's base flow, there's storm events, contaminants are very sporadic, so you may not see anything, and it may happen when you don't happen to grab a sample.
How often do you take samples of that, or do you?
We do not.
You do not?
So, we can be, we could be contaminating the Green River and White Rivers annoyingly.
Let me tell you, from a neighborhood standpoint, I've caught some people putting "you don't even want to know" down in those storm drains that are in the streets. And the only thing that's supposed to go down there is rainwater and runoff.
Correct.
That's really hard for me to understand why it's not monitored.
Technically, it's not a part of the requirements for the...
Oh, here, she'll explain why.
Yeah, so, it's not part of the requirement for the permit for us to monitor for those things for at the discharge locations. We do do some testing at different times when we're doing different permit requirements.
Dry weather flow, for instance.
And when it comes to, like, construction activity, we do monitor every construction site and actually do turbidity monitoring. You also have several locations within the city where they have their own individual industrial permit requirements. So, an example, that's the airport, where we actually go and we do monitor our discharge from the airport directly into the storm system.
All right, that's a new one.
We have a lot of outfalls to the different rivers in town, so I mean, trying to monitor all of them would be very costly.
But you do sample them periodically, though?
Oh, we do not?
No.
Typically, only with the comprehensive planning type process or when the NPDs permit requires us to provide some specific information related to the permit requirements. At the same time, a lot of how the storm system is built basically has systems in place to try to keep those contaminants out of the discharge. That's our control structures on our storm systems, the catch basins that we go out and we monitor and clean. That's why the NPDs permit, it's so important for us to go and do those inspections on those catch basins to make sure that they're functioning, make sure they're clean, make sure that they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing to try to keep those contaminants out of the stormwater.
I'm sure we're meeting the intent of the permit and all of that in all areas. However, sometimes you have to use a little common sense, too. And if some areas may be more subject to this kind of a thing, then maybe we ought to have some kind of things for our own protection. I know, I know we're talking money and we're talking staff, but, you know, is it the right thing or the wrong thing to do? I don't think it's the wrong thing.
And we can, we can look at that when we go through our next comprehensive planning process for it. There are some cautions out there in dealing with doing active monitoring, continuous monitoring on stormwater discharge. Once you know that there's an issue, then you have to track it down to find that issue. And when you're dealing with a system that is citywide, that is potentially difficult to do. So, which is why the source control is really where we put our emphasis and what the NPDs permit is focused on, is making sure that we're not discharging contaminants into the system in the first place.
I would like to request that we have a report back to the council on what do other cities, how do they manage? I mean, take the region, you know, the South King County area, up into Renton, what do they do? I'd like to know.
Where there's rivers and places that receive a lot of this outflow.
Yeah.
There, we do through our stormwater permit participate in a regional monitoring program. So, it's a Puget Sound-wide monitoring program, scientifically developed, statistically accurate, hundreds of sample sites around Puget Sound that are looking at what is happening in storm drainage and in receiving waters, receive drainage from municipalities. We contribute financially into that program. So, that is one area where we are looking at this, but it is not specifically Auburn, but it is statistically relevant to Auburn.
And that is part of what develops, I believe, the criteria for when we can discharge the Green River, the White River, when you have constraints on what that discharge can allow to go out there. They look at that monitoring information region-wide, because it's not just us, it's everybody else discharging to the same location.
Well, I'd still like to know what the other cities around us do. Another question on, this is on chapter nine, monitoring. It's on this, on this report, it's page eighty-seven or sixteen. Or sixteen. It's regarding permit requirements and planned compliance activities. In the nine point one permit requirements, it's, the city committed in 2013 to pay forty-five thousand and some change. And then, if you look down at table nine dash one, it has payment of forty-eight thousand.
Yes.
So, are those different things?
Well, if you look, in the first paragraph, it says we are paying forty-five thousand. In the second paragraph, we are adding an additional payment of twenty-six hundred.
Oh, and that covers, okay.
So, those two combined become forty-seven.
All right, end of question. I should have done that, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to say that the definitions of the acronyms, it's really very helpful. It really is. And, you know, you cover illicit discharge, LID, low-impact development, MS four means municipal separate storm sewer system. So, that kind of tweaked me. Oh, okay. And then, this is, can I ask another one about?
Sure.
Unless someone else...
You're on a roll. Go ahead, babe.
This is on page ninety-five and is dealing with public education outreach. Water Festival, fourth and fifth grade students. Here we go again. Did your students bring that back on the water festival?
No, probably I don't require, remember that, but...
Okay. But this is the type of thing, four hundred and eight Auburn students attended the festival last year, where they learned about stormwater, pollution prevention, wetlands, salmon, drinking water, and sanitary sewer issues. This, I think, would be a great thing to add to the civic, something like that, you know, like a chart or something for them. Now, low and dear to my heart, car wash kit program. And when I was on the Regional Water Quality Committee, this is what you learned, they talked about car wash kits. City of Kent was on the same committee I was on. So, it tweaked me, I says, God, I wonder if Auburn has car wash kits? We didn't. So, we brought the Kent water guy up here and our water guy, who's not here now, and that was...
Aaron Nix.
Huh?
Aaron Nix, if I believe.
Yeah, Aaron Nix, right? So, we purchased a couple of these car wash kits. And so, that's been thirteen years ago. But it's a heck of a program where, you know, a lot of the nonprofit organizations have a car washes, right? Well, they can check out one of these kits, collect all the sudsy water, and make sure it goes to the sewer system. That's a great program. It really is. And I'm glad to see that you guys are still, you know, promoting it.
Any other questions?
Yes. Hey, I didn't read this for naught. I'm going to tell you, and I just...
We can tell. You're on a roll, go ahead.
Car wash, again. Oh, now, here's all of these different call-ins. I was amazed at some of the illicit dumping that some of our citizens do in this town. It's appalling, it really is. And I hope that they're watching, people are watching this, please don't put in contaminants into the storm drains. It's only going to cost us more money if you do that. And I was really appreciative of the citizens that call in when they see something. I mean, it's huge. And same with the police department. You guys do a great job of identifying illicit dumping of water, of chemicals. So, I read all through this and I was really, I was, I felt real good about it. I really did. And you guys are doing...
It's a lot of good work.
You guys are doing a great job of making sure all this is monitored. Amen.
Okay. Are there any tickets or...
Typically, we...
Compliance of any of these things?
We utilize education as our first step in any case. Try to get voluntary compliance. If necessary, then we can escalate to a notice to correct violation, utilizing our code enforcement people. We don't do that very often, but it is an option.
I would think there should be a stiff fine for people that violate these things on a regular basis.
Yeah, so when you go into code enforcement action, then yes, there are some penalties that can be assessed for each day that they have not addressed the issue. So, there can be fines to that. As Chris said, we try to avoid going to that level unless we absolutely need to. We try to work on education and getting compliance from residents and businesses first.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I would like feedback for the council on the guidelines that code enforcement has on illicit dumping. I'd like to see what their...
Are you talking about spill response, illicit discharge, or dumping of materials on the side of the road?
Anything that would have the possibility of going into our storm system.
So, typically, illicit discharge actually starts with the storm staff, and they actually do, they go out, they do the investigation, and they start the process.
Oh, I know, but I want to know what the code enforcement policy is when these guys report to them. Because I am, I am appalled at some of these construction contractors that are in this. They shouldn't be educated. They should be fined right away, bang, because they're out, they do this all the time, discharging right into our waterway, so to speak. They should be fined right away.
Well, if they, if they're aware of the violation, I mean, in the beginning, it's where the education comes in. They did the same thing where I live right now, when they were building the new facilities over there. And it was mostly a learning process for some of the contractors.
Bob, deputy mayor, what I am saying is, these, a brand-new contractor, first job, okay, educate them. But a contractor that's been out in the communities all around us for years and years, they should be fined right at the bingo.
Yeah, we went through that, and the water quality inspectors came around, and they resolved the... resolved the issues in every case, so.
But were they fined?
No, they were not.
Why not? That's my point.
It was the nature of the violation. It wasn't, it wasn't a, something that really created a bigger problem.
But have you read these?
Yes, I have.
There are some in here.
It'll make your hair stand on end.
Well, yeah. So, but I still would like to have the code enforcement policy when it's reported by you guys to them.
So, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, if Jeff wants to join us up here and talk about what the code enforcement requirements are, but there is a process that they have to follow once it actually starts the notice of to correct process. So there's timeframes that are required by, by our code and by law.
I want to make sure the council understands the disciplinary actions that.
Sure. One thing that I'll add for the record, Jeff T., Assistant Director of Community Development. So as Chris and Tim have mentioned, Ingrid has mentioned, those incidents get recorded in code enforcement and there's a few things that we do. I mean, first of all, if we're dealing with a contractor, we have our typical code enforcement procedures that we can follow. We also have, and we utilize routinely, the threat of no more inspections, shutting down the job site, no more work. So that is a, an effective tool, I guess you would call it, because nobody wants that interruption.
No.
So, and we have the ability to proceed through our typical notice of infraction, which is a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ticket. Notice of penalty, five-hundred-dollar fine with a hundred-dollar-a-day penalty. We have those. It's interesting you should ask the question because one of the things that we think that we lack in his honor two thousand and eighteen work plan is to come to council with some suggestive language on proceeding to direct fine for egregious penalties. That we can, that we know, we witness, we know that the person that we're interacting with knows better. We would like to have the tool available to us to skip a step.
Yep.
Skip two steps maybe and proceed directly to more of a ticket for handed out on the spot. So that is something that you'll see in two thousand and eighteen coming before council as a suggestion for, from staff for legislative action.
Yeah, because we don't want to be taken advantage of by some of, some contractors that know better.
Right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, I, a couple of years ago, I went through a tear-down and rebuild of my house, second and D, second, northeast and D. And I would tell you that my contractor was very, he was on top of it when it came to preventing the dirt and turning into mud and flowing onto the sidewalk or into the street. And I just would say that waiting anxiously to move back into our house, had you done a stop order on that contractor, I would have been on that contractor, you know, with a great deal of diligence.
Yes.
So I think as far as putting a stop order on, on these contractors, I think is probably about as effective as anything almost because that's heading towards out of business if that lasts for too long.
Any other question, Bob?
So you mentioned the storm water management plan. Every contractor for every job has to perform on these, on the plan, or is it just the larger contractors?
There's different thresholds and we have different permits for each of the three thresholds. So depending upon how much site disturbance you're creating, you fall into a different level, which requires additional compliance.
So do we let them start a project and go to work without approval of the storm water management plan?
So it depends upon the level of permit. Not every permit requires a storm water management plan for a specific site. If it does rise to the level of permit where they need that storm water management plan for that permit, that plan must be approved as part of that permit process before they can start work.
So that means start any work on the site? Okay, thank you.
The storm water management plan also is, is plan specifications and it's a storm water report, erosion control plan. It is the whole body of that documentation put together. That's the plan.
Any other questions before I?
Just a comment.
His council member Pelosi.
Comment. So Jeff answered the question on the code enforcement, so you don't have to mess with that.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Andrew, Chris?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Great job.
Good staff.
Oh, we do have that one, though, about what cities discharge. Okay, we want to know about.
Get out of the weeds.
Okay, I think the next item on the list is the ordinance number sixty-six seventy-seven.
Hello, that's a kind of a good segue, talking about water quality. So, just give me a sec. So for the record, my name is Alexandria Teague. I am a planner two within Community Development and Public Works. Tonight I have, oh, I just want to make one note that the presentation that you're going to see on your screen is a little bit different than the ones that you have in your packet. That's because I simplified the presentation for you because I didn't want to repeat a lot of the materials that are included in your packets. So with that, you have before you the draft ordinance sixty-six seventy-seven, which is intended to establish an open space as a zoning district within city code and the city zoning map. So ordinance, ordinance number sixty-six seventy-seven includes both a zoning text amendment and a zoning map amendment. And I'd like to refer to them collectively as the open space zoning amendment. Okay. So I'd like to start with a little bit of history about the, the reason why essentially you have the open space zoning amendment before you. So as you recall, well, let me just back up. So the purpose of this open space zoning amendment is to establish a zone that will implement the open space land use designation. So this is why I'd like to back up a little bit. So as you remember, at the end of two thousand and fifteen, we went through the process of adopting a new comprehensive plan. We also adopted a new comprehensive plan map. Those were done under ordinance sixty-five eighty-four. And the new comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan map included a new land use designation of open space. And under our existing structure of our comprehensive plan, each land use designation is implemented by at least one zoning district. And the purpose of each zoning district is to implement its respective land use designation and address the allowed uses and the zoning development standards such as setbacks and things of that nature. So currently, there is no open space zone in Auburn City Code, which is, again, the reason why the open space zoning amendment is before you all tonight. So as you've probably read in your packets, there's a, there is a lot of momentum building up to establishing new open space zone. The Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time reviewing and discussing the open space zoning amendment. It, the open space zoning amendment, it was considered at four meetings with the Planning Commission, beginning in December two thousand and sixteen and all the way to April, through April fourth, two thousand and seventeen. And then on July fifth, two thousand and seventeen, Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. The public hearing was then continued on to August eighth because they, essentially the Planning Commission, I should say, were concerned principally by the effect of the proposed amendment on private property owners, specifically the Cherneys, because they are the only individual private property owners affected by the proposed amendment. And they also wanted to sure, ensure that staff had sufficient coordination with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, considering six, I think about six of their parcels under their ownership and within the reservation boundary are affected. So staff's efforts to notice and to coordinate, to notice the Cherneys and to coordinate with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe is included in the August eighth staff report to Planning Commission, and that's included on page one-twenty-two of your packet. So apologies. All right, so I'd like to transition, if I may, to the effect and purpose of the open space zoning district. So per the open space intent, intent statement provided on page one-thirteen of your packet, the purpose of this zone is to be applied to parcels that are really largely undeveloped in character, parcels that feature some natural urban conservancy shoreline areas. And I'll add that those are, the natural being the most restrictive of our shoreline designation. Significant wildlife habitat areas, large storm water detention ponds, floodplain ponds, utility corridors, and watersheds. Watersheds are those areas of significance for our, our water essentially, or areas with significant development restrictions, think like really, really steep slopes. So the majority of the affected parcels, or I should say the parcels included in the proposed open space zoning amendment, they're actually owned by the city of Auburn and they generally feature either a critical area such as a wetland or utility infrastructure. I think the Auburn Environmental Park or AEP is a good example of parcels or an area that's included in the proposed amendment. The majority of the non-city-owned parcels are actually owned by another jurisdiction such as King County or a private utility such as Puget Sound Energy. And they're actually encumbered by utility infrastructure, like a transmission line. The remaining five non-city-owned parcels that are, again, not owned by a government agency or private utility are privately owned and also feature environmental or developmental So I, I mentioned earlier that the Planning Commission requested that staff coordinate review with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. And they even made coordinating with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe part of their recommendation to council. Therefore, I wanted to mention how the open space zoning amendment applies to Indian lands. That's those lands owned by the Muckshoot Indian Tribe and within their reservation boundary. So as provided in the Auburn City Code, there's a section eighteen-one zero-five-zero. The intent of that section is to address how city zoning and land use regulations, land use regulations apply to, to Indian lands. So again, I want to kind of reinforce that the purpose of this proposed open space zoning amendment is to apply such that if the lands were no longer, or such, those Indian lands were no longer under Indian jurisdiction, so perhaps the, they were to be sold or, I don't know, however, not include the reservation or most likely not to be sold. So if they were to change in ownership or jurisdictional character, basically, then our, our, our land use regulations would apply. So that's essentially how the, the relationship between this, this proposed amendment and So with that, I've just briefly discussed the proposal to enact the new open space zone in city code and on the city zoning map. This item is tentatively scheduled for the February twentieth council meeting and I'm readily available to answer any of your questions. Awesome.
Jeff, thank you.
Sure. When is this going to come to us?
Uh, February twentieth.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, at this point in the meeting, I will turn the meeting over to our Finance and Economic Development. Do you want to have a break? Okay, let's take a six-minute break. Would that be enough? Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, respectfully request to keep us out of the weeds. Two hours on two subjects, too much. When basically one person is asking the questions. Well, Clark, I think we'll use the bathroom for both of us.
Yeah, that'd be good, thank you. I really appreciate it. No, I have to get up. My follower might get up.
I'm really glad to see you.
Thank you.
You still look a little bit pale.
No, it's been, it's been pretty rough, yeah. One medication I take is just.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're both taking turns texting you every day. What can we do for you?
Yeah, appreciate it. No, it's been really good.
Just ask.
My daughter's been fantastic in this whole thing. So, real good, so. She's got energy again. Comes back slower than it loses, you lose it.
That pizza kind of. Cast iron stomach you used to have. It was, the pizza was too tomatoey. You had to eat two of those Supremes. There was just too much tomato. I, I thought. I'm no expert, but. Man, I, I didn't realize that. None of this was monitored.
Especially the storm drains, that, that goes directly, it goes directly into the rivers.
Ditches, going, goes right out into the green. And we're, we're doing the Dewami Superfund cleanup. And I've been talking, where in the hell are the hotspots in the green? Just monitor Auburn. Doesn't make sense, man. Right here is RWQC right here. She'll, she'll raise hell.
Hey.
We'll hear more.
I'm excited. I was really excited the first meeting I had with them. Lots, lots to.
All about water, man.
A lot of people take, take it all for granted.
What's her name? She was there, she'll work with me. Danny? Who is that lady's name that was sitting behind Ingrid? What was, what is her name? The one that was sitting behind you? Or is next to you? Lisa. Yeah, she was at the water, regional water meeting with me and so I'm going to work with her.
Mm-hmm. Good. We don't get in the weeds.
Don't get in the weeds. This is interesting. Our new council member needs to know some of this stuff, too.
Okay, well, we're all present, so I guess we can reconvene. At this point, we will turn it over to the Finance and Economic Development for discussion items.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Next up is item four B, and Shelley Coleman, I think, is up on the hot seat. Thank you. This pertains to the SST, I assume it's not the Supersonic Transport, but the streamlined sales tax.
Well, the SST is done, and SST is almost done. How's that for a segue?
Good, good.
Wanted to give you an update on streamlined sales tax and where we're at with it. As you know, this goes back to two thousand seven, or, yeah, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when there was a sourcing change, which, there's a memorandum I sent out to you, I think, last August. If you'd like to see that again, I'm happy to send it to you, but it's the sourcing change would be, it used to be, if you lived in Renton, went to Tuck Willa, went to a storefront in Tuck Willa and bought a piece of furniture, it was warehoused in Kent, and then it was sent to your home in Renton. Kent would get the sales tax because it was warehoused in Kent, even though the store's in Tuck Willa and the purchaser lived in Renton. Now, when the purchaser goes to that Tuck Willa storefront and the piece of furniture comes out of Kent and goes to Renton to the final destination, that's destination-based, Renton gets the sales tax. What that has done for cities such as Auburn and Kent in particular, as well as Tuck Willa and Fife and Sumner to a lesser degree, and Issaquah, is we are cities that are heavily, have a heavy distribution warehousing, manufacturing center, and we, cities, these cities are no longer receiving sales tax that they used to receive. What happened is the mitigation was marked and set in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, and if you recall, in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, we're in the middle of the recession, and the state year ran from July one, two thousand eight, through June thirty, two thousand nine, and the city of Auburn's sales tax decreased in two thousand eight from two thousand seven, eleven and a half percent, and then the following year, two thousand eight to two thousand nine, in a calendar year, an additional twenty-four percent. So it's a total of almost, or about thirty-five percent year over year. That's when the mitigation was set. It took a snapshot in time, they measured how much the city lost, and they came up with two million and change. So that was our mitigation that was set at that time. And with the sourcing change, they thought that the state felt that there would be, felt or believed that there would be voluntary, voluntary internet commerce that would come in and offset that mitigation, and in a few years would be whole. Well, over the past ten years, the city has now mitigated one point nineteen million, so about eighty thousand dollars, or about eight thousand dollars a year, has increased for the voluntary, so it hasn't been robust, to say the least. Here we are today, we're still being mitigated for one point nine-two million, and since then, Kent in particular, they're mitigated over four million dollars a year. But a study was done by region, regional, you know, regional, I don't want to say Regional Transit, but I can't think of it now.
Puget Sound Regional.
Puget Sound Regional Council, thank you. That Kent, they're saying today, that four million dollar loss that was benchmarked ten years ago is about twelve million dollars today. So that's about three times the amount. So if you look at Auburn and apply that same percentage to Auburn, it'd be six million. So it's significant, but anyway, we have, yeah, we, back in two thousand ten, we went through some reductions, and we've grown slowly as our revenue has allowed us to grow, and most of that has been other revenue sources. But back to streamlined sales tax. So there's a couple of things right now that I really want to focus on, and one is the first item in the memorandum, on page one of the memorandum, where literally, as you know, the budget was passed at the eleventh hour on June thirtieth, the state budget, and in the ado that was going on with getting the budget passed, about two point three million or ten percent was not funded. The need was to be twenty-three million, and they funded it at less than twenty-one million. There's a supplemental budget that they're, or they're trying to put something into the additional, put an additional preparation into the supplemental budget. Hopefully that happens. If we applied that ten percent across the board to everyone, it would be about three hundred and eighty thousand, and of course, that's my calculation, you know, I'm just taking the assumption, ten percent reduction, ten percent reduction, and what we receive would be about three hundred and eighty thousand moving forward. Now, the House Bill two-one-six-three, that was passed also with the budget, and what that does is it puts into place a Marketplace Fairness Act, as well as it sunsets the streamlined sales tax mitigation for cities such as Canton, Auburn, and Tuck Willa, and Issaquah, and Fife, and Sumner. And the last payment, I'm getting conflicting reports, but it looks like it's going to be September of two thousand nineteen. However, between, before that happens, and before the sunset, there was a slight provision or a small note in the bill that said the Department of Revenue would look again at mitigation matched against the Marketplace Fairness Act and see how cities such as Canton, Auburn were doing. And right now, they can, Department of Revenue will do that measurement, however, they're not really in a position to say, well, what kind of things could the legislature do? What are some initiatives they could do to make these cities whole? And this is where the, a task force or a committee has been formed with AWC and Kent heading it up, and there's chambers on it in cities to meet about monthly, once a month through August, to come up with some suggestions to provide the legislature of some things that they could do. And this would go into the memorandum, the Department of Revenue has to have to legislature by November of this year. The Department of Revenue wants it from these, this committee by September of this year. So that's where we're at with that. Now, on the Marketplace Fairness, there's some news, as I put in this memorandum, that the reason in internet catalog sales, and it's not just internet catalog, if you call up and order something, sales tax is not charged unless there's brick and mortar of that store in your state. And back, this is all based upon a court decision by the Supreme Court in nineteen ninety-two, Quill versus North Dakota, where they said, before you can collect sales tax, you need to have brick and mortar. Some of the judges on the Supreme Court, the newest one, Gorsuch, Gorsuch.
Gorsuch.
Gorsuch, from Colorado, when he was sitting on the Colorado Court, he made comments saying that it would be great to have this come back in front of the courts due to the changes that have happened in technology and purchasing. There's also, and I can't tell you which justice, but another Supreme Court justice had written in some of his comments that it was time to revisit this. Well, it's going to be revisited this spring, South Dakota Wayfair, and that is going in front of the Supreme Court, and they should have a decision by June whether there can be interstate sales tax on commerce and what defines brick and mortar. Whereas some states, as Washington, have identified it to be something other than brick and mortar, if you have internet presence. There's a handful of states that are starting to move in this direction to identify brick and mortar or something different, and we are hopeful. This is kind of aside from the mitigation, because this would be good for all the cities, and the Marketplace Fairness Act in Washington, it calls for businesses to register with the state, and if they register, to register and collect sales tax and remit it. However, if they choose not to do that, they can keep a list of people, most recent address or email address of who they've sold to over ten thousand dollars in product, and submit that list to Department of Revenue on an annual basis. They also would like them to do things like stamp on the invoice and any of the materials that go with the product to the buyer that use taxes do, and you need to submit it to Department of Revenue. And the big player here, and I'm going to say the name, we can't mention names due to, but this one we can mention because they've come right out and said, it's us, and we're going to start charging sales tax, and that's Amazon. But you can probably think of a couple of other big refers or marketplace facilitators that don't collect sales tax and remit it. So, you know, the big one, Amazon, says they're going to do it. I don't know if you noticed, you know, I didn't think much of it, I went back and looked at some of my orders from last year, and some had sales tax on them, and some did not. So it depends on whether they're a facilitator or a referrer, or, there's three categories there, but whether they collect the sales tax. Hopefully, we will get to the point, and what will happen if Supreme Court overturns, or overturns the Quill decision from eighteen years, or sixteen years ago, that'll be good, but how are they going to go about that? Because there are states that have done the sourcing change, and Washington is one of them, so the thought is, these are the states that are streamlined, and their sales tax will be the first that can begin to collect the sales tax. But that'll be all worked out after there's some Supreme Court decision.
Councilmember.
Shelley, I ordered from Amazon, and I noticed the same thing, that some things that I ordered, they charged me taxes, and others they didn't, it all depend on how much I spend. So when are they thinking, or when did you hear they're going to start implementing?
January one.
January.
So I, I think that anything that you go out and order from Amazon now, you're going to see a sales tax on.
Any questions? Thank you for the update.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for adding taxes to us.
Man, I think Shelley is still up here, ordinance number sixty-six seventy-eight.
A little background on this, for some of you that weren't here back in two thousand ten, or late two thousand eight or nine, the city, this beautiful promenade out here in a city park, and did, that's what you see on top, underneath there's utility and infrastructure improvement, stormwater improvement, which was required before the blocks could be developed out. This was a local revitalization funding, it was from the state, it was good for twenty-five years. They would pay up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of any debt over a period of twenty-five years that the city incurred, they'd match up to fifty percent in two hundred and fifty thousand for any debt the city incurred to do these types of improvements. And the city took them up on that offer and issued the debt for these improvements, and every year, the city must do an ordinance and a report, and it's another report that we send along with this ordinance, telling them what they have to levy and a sales tax credit. This is an additional sales tax to anyone, this is a deduction from the state portion of sales tax, which is diverted from the state to the city to meet that debt service payment. This is an annual thing that you will see for the next, through two thousand thirty-four, and this is eighteen, so that's going to be another sixteen years that we'll see this.
We have to do this every year?
Every year, because we're changing the levy rate, because it depends on how much we think sales tax will be in the city, and so it may go up, it may go down. And that's what this is about, this will be on the city council agenda next week, next Monday, or Tuesday, I guess it would be.
Any questions? Thank you again, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Shelley.
Okay, are there any other discussion items for the council?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Tonight I attended the, via the teleconference call with King Conservation District, and they were to approve a twenty thousand dollar grant for the Auburn International Farmers' Market. I commented on public, I commented during public comment time, we were awarded the twenty thousand dollars for the twenty-eighteenth market. This brings our total from KCD since we started the market in two thousand nine to approximately two hundred thousand dollars for the market. It was a win-win.
It's going to be at Lescove Park.
Lescove Park.
Right over here by the train station.
Yeah.
Okay. Any new business? We've had a few TBDs on here for the schedule, and I think we'd like to try to see if we can assign some dates to these.
I haven't heard from our attorney Dan yet to find out when his office can come in and talk to us. I need a date on that, and then I'm meeting with Dana next, next week, so we'll get a date down for her to do that.
I did, if I could just help out a little, I did talk to the prosecutors, and they are putting a report together, and I will get information in terms of when that will be ready and pass that on.
Okay, thank you.
Come on, anything on those?
We're meeting on the fourteenth, we gotta go through the agenda, and we can discuss then whether or not they can come to the twenty-sixth meeting or push it off.
Okay. That'll be both of those items.
Or anything else they may have identified at that point.
What items are they? What items?
They're the community sustainability.
Well, there's a number.
Two, three, and four.
Which?
Two, three, and four.
Okay.
And I think we've got one TBD down here for Finance, Lovable Cities.
Is Jeff Tate still in the audience?
I can't speak to that at this time.
So as soon as anybody gets any of these dates, please give me a shout.
They do know that we need to put a placeholder under Finance, and we have biennial budget due this year, we're gonna have several work groups, so. How many working sessions are we planning, Shelley?
Well, I know the mayor's trying to get a retreat together, or there's a retreat scheduled, and that's not finalized yet, but there'll be a, kind of a budget one-on-one thing, and I'm really switching it up this year of what we've done in the past, and then we'll probably be meeting in August to go over, we generally schedule three with council to go over the budget.
Don't get rid of your cups, I really.
Well, we'll have the cups there, but.
I like those cups.
But I'm going to interject a few things into there to kind of broaden it, focus on what you're going to see and what the format's going to look like, but I'm gonna go a little broader and then come down.
Yeah, I think everybody got a projected agenda that Danny put out, so be thinking about those study session dates and everything.
I have a, I've got a couple.
Okay.
One is on March twenty, this is for, this is for the salmon color. March twenty, well, National League of Cities Service Line Program, Service Line Program.
Now, they're not, it's not on the council matrix, but it is on the agenda, the projected agenda.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I agree with my colleague.
No, he needs to be on, he needs to be on the matrix.
So what I'm saying is, the guy's traveling from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for March twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth, Service Line Program, Perens NLC. 26th, March 26th, Service Line Program, Prendz, NLC, sponsor. And then I have another one. You confirm this?
Yes.
Mobile Home Park Closure. That's for next week, and that could go under red. That could be discussed under red. 226, Mobile Home Park Closure Procedure. And if you want to put in Prendz, you could put in city code 14.20. Then there'll also be some RCWs, you know, brought into that as well.
Okay.
February 26th, two weeks. Do you have any other additions to the matrix? Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
I, uh, it's probably not a matrix item, but, uh, I, uh, received a communications from my international union that, uh, told me that they're intending to do a member profile piece for the National Journal, um, on, on me and my being on the city council, it's something that, uh, the machinists encourage, is for members to run for public office. And so probably the first meeting, uh, city council meeting in March, they may be here and do a short bit of video. I, uh, spoke with, uh, city attorney and, uh, the mayor about the permissibility of this, there doesn't seem to be any problem with that, but I wanted to run it by the council and see if anybody had any strong objections with just having them set up and-
That, that would be at the March 12th study session?
No, it'll be a regular, um, session.
Regular city council meeting?
City council meeting.
What's the purpose of that?
Featuring, uh, a machinist union member that did run for office.
It's gonna be on a resolution then, or?
Uh, no, this is merely just a video crew that's gonna come in.
Oh, oh, oh.
Short, a short video. They're not gonna be here for long, they're just gonna take a, a little bit of video.
They're gonna film?
Right, our-
Okay, yeah, that's, oh.
Our meeting.
Is this a warning for me to be on my best behavior?
Yeah, no more swearing or throwing stuff at people, yeah.
Make sure you wear your tie.
You haven't done it before, I just don't want you to start, that's all.
Oh, he hasn't? You haven't been here.
Maybe, maybe I have. I didn't see this.
I don't think you've ever heard me curse.
Maybe throws-
Not cursed.
I don't think that's an item for the matrix, but I think it is.
Just a heads up for everybody.
Good, thank you for that. Well, with that, if there's no other business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. All right. Get the gavel, man.